I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. This is Monday, November 14, 2022. We welcome you to our special county commission meeting for certifying results of the elections. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are around here somewhere. And if you're going to speak, make sure you sign in with your name and address on the sign-in sheet. And I think that's it. I look for a motion to approve today's agenda.
So moved. Second?
A motion of second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll have a special commission action. Oh, I did that. Item number one is consider motion to certify the results of the November 8, 2022 general election. Ben?
Morning Commissioners, Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. Here today to present to you the, our canvas results for the November 8th general election. I've given, we've given you several documents to reference. We do have a county canvassing board, procedures, it kind of helps you understand your roles and responsibilities. We do, we will have reports, our canvas reports from our voter registration list. We will have our tapes from, by precinct over there. We'll have poll books, registration lists for review. And then, just then after all that, we'll look for a motion to accept the results. But I thought I'd give you a summary of the election. So, you know, today we will report on the November 8th general election for Minnehaha County. Total of 75,579 ballots were cast, representing about 57.8% of the total registered active voters in Minnehaha County. The auditor's office reviewed the results of each race and reconciled the canvas report presented to you today to the control reports from the election wear system. As a result of this review and our reconciliation, I'm confident that the results are, we're presenting to you are, today are accurate. Results we provide you today do not, do include adjustments for provisional ballots that were not included in the vote count that was reported on election night. Those adjustments include provisional ballots that were received and validated and included in the count. These adjustments did not have any impact on the outcome of any races involved. So, we received a total of 13 provisional ballots, and after our review, it was determined that nine of those were valid. Counting of the ballots took approximately from about 7:30 in the evening until about 3:30 a.m., or about eight hours. To be full compliance with these statutes, we are unable to begin counting the absentee ballots until the polls closed at 7:00 p.m. That statute required the county auditors to notify the political parties at least 10 days before the election if, if they're going to begin counting absentee ballots prior to the close of the polls. We notified the parties nine days prior to the election. So I would estimate that change may have added about two hours to our counting time. The tabulating machines worked well without any material issues. No material issues were identified with the processing of the ballots in the general election. So in preparation for the general election, the auditor's office did make several changes to the process to hopefully address problems that were encountered in the primary as well as add overall improvements to the process. Some of the examples of the changes that were made. To address the issue of providing incorrect ballots to voters located in split precincts with two legislative districts, we adjusted the training sessions so that we spent about a third to half of the class time on how to correctly identify the ballot that should be given to the voters. We also color coordinated the ballot wrappers that the ballots were shipped in so that the election workers could clearly see that the ballots were different from the others. And then we also asked the election workers to record the legislative districts of the voter along with the voter name to the poll book. This was intended just to serve as another reminder that there were, there could be more than one ballot to choose from. And I think for the most part, we believe these efforts significantly reduced that issue. Other process improvements we made, we tried to intentionally overstaff polling locations in the face of election workers calling in sick or unable to work. We thought, we thought a location, they needed five workers. I tried to assign six. If we had 15 work, I think we had about 15 workers cancel that week leading up to the election, and this overstaffing helped to address that issue. We offered online election worker applications. That was a great help. We received about 270 applications from the online application. This allowed us to greatly improve our poll of election, pool of election workers. We reached out to other organizations, letting them know that we could use help. We received several new workers from organizations like Active Generations and other veterans organizations. We had fully identified election workers for polling locations about three to four weeks prior to Election Day. We continued to receive applications from voters asking to work. We didn't turn any of them away, but instead asked them to be alternates in the event someone would cancel. Additionally, we would assign them to absentee boards to help open the absentee ballots. This turned out to be a good strategy as it allowed us to build a pool of replacement workers. We asked anyone that agreed to be an alternate to also attend the election worker training so that they could be prepared to go to the polls and work. We had about 50 alternates attend election worker training. In addition to the 350 assigned election workers at the polls, this process also allowed us to staff about 100 absentee board members that were all needed to open and process approximately 17,000 absentee ballots that we had received. I hired 12 part-time staff to help with the processing of absentee applications, voter registrations, nursing home absentee voting, and in-person absentee. Again, I think I could have doubled that number if I, and I could have used them all if I would have had place to put them. It was just, you know, there's a lot of volume that came in. In total, I used between 450 to 500 people to work on some portion of the election process, and each of them helped make this election a success. So that's kind of the summary of the election. I also, I'll note, over the weekend, there was an article about Tripp County's hand count. And I read the, some information on that, and I think I understand what the issues were. For what I read, that they did a hand count of their ballots, and they compared that to their tabulating machine ballots. That process, they used the controls when they did the hand count, it appears, but didn't use the control process that is used to, in the tabulating machine. So, when we count ballots at the end of the night, the ballots come in from each precinct. The precincts provide us a recap sheet, which tells them how many ballots that they received, and then they have how many ballots are left over the end of the night, the difference being the ballots used. We reconcile those to each one of those precincts as we count to make sure that we have counted the right number of ballots, right? That's, that's the control process that's used across the state. So what I understand when I read the information on the Tripp County, when they counted using the tabulators, they didn't use that control process since it wasn't the official ballots. They used the control process when they hand counted, but not when they used the tabulators. So they missed about 75 ballots. If they would have been using the control process that they used during the hand count, they would have saw that they had undercounted those ballots, and they would have caught right away. So now, that's the impression I get from reading the article. It wasn't that the tabulating machine missed them, it's just that the, the humans, you know, this, this is after a, this is about 5:00 in the morning, right? They work till about 5:00 in the morning, much like we did. I think they just missed that part of it. So I just want to make sure that if people are concerned about hand counting being more accurate, I think it was more a human error from what I saw, and not having a control process consistently for the hand count and the tabulating count in Tripp County. So, I think those are my comments on the election. Any questions before we proceed?
Commissioner Barth?
Thanks, Ben. I do have a couple. Just for the public's benefit, sometimes people get a wrong ballot or make a wrong mark in that ballot. They bring it back and they say, "I ruined my ballot. Can I have another one?" So, there's a few of those that happen, right? So when you reconcile, those have to be accounted for.
Right. So we have a, in our case, what we do is we have a special envelope for, what we refer to as spoiled ballots. So you, you were given a ballot, maybe you marked it differently than you wanted to. You go back to the election worker, they can give you a, a new ballot that, but we then record that spoiled ballot separately. We put it in a separate envelope, and it's all part of a reconciliation.
So did you have many of those?
I assume that we did have some. I didn't count those, but yes, I mean, we always have some of those.
Also, could you define further a provisional ballot, just so people that might someday view this could remember how to do this?
Yeah. So a provisional ballot is when you are at the, at the polls, a situation arises where either you're not on the poll list, or you're not on the registration list, or you insist that you should be able to vote for some reason. The, the election worker needs to contact the auditor's office. We go through our, our review process and determine if that person can be given a provisional ballot. So, what the provisional ballot is, is that it's a regular ballot. There's nothing special about it, but the, that voter would then have to fill out a special envelope that gives them, us their name and information with why there's a request for the provisional ballot. They're then given a, a ballot. They vote that ballot, and then you have to fold that ballot up and put it in that blue envelope. So that's how we separate it. So that, then that blue envelope goes in the ballot box, right? And then when we receive it here tonight, we sort those out. We don't count those. That ballot stays in that blue envelope. It's not counted. We review it the next day, and we determine whether that person, that ballot should be counted or not. So in some of the examples that we had, we had a, individuals who came to a precinct. They insisted they wanted to vote at that precinct even though that they were not registered to vote there. We gave them a provisional ballot, told them that it may not be counted. So when we come back the next day, we looked them up. We find where they're registered to vote. If they're not registered to vote in that precinct, then that ballot's not going to be counted. All right. So, it's a provisional, that we have all accepted. We just review it, and then we will send a letter off to those people that they're not accepted.
So, for example, if I lost my wallet while visiting a foreign country, didn't have a driver's license to present, or, you know, that would be a person that might want to vote a provisional ballot?
Possibly. So, in that case, that might not be a provisional ballot. That might be in a, a, an emergency personal affidavit where you can, if we find you on the, on the registration list, and we, you can sign an affidavit that says, "I am who I say I am," basically. And so you're acknowledging that it's a, hence the law, to vote if you're not that person.
Did we have much of that, do you know?
We do have a few of those.
Okay.
But we, the state law requires us to give everybody that option if they don't have ID.
Well, thank you, Ben.
Any other questions for Ben before we move on with the canvassing part of it? Okay?
Okay. So, what, as I said, what we provided you today are the canvas reports, the, the tapes from the individual precincts, poll books, the registration list. You tell me how you want to proceed. Do you want me to provide you the canvas report to review, or you want to look at the procedures and see how you might want to?
Trying to remember how we did it last time, how you directed us to do it last time, because I know we took, we had somebody read, read numbers or something, and other people checked them in the books to make sure they'd actually voted. I don't remember, I don't actually remember the procedure. So you're going to have to help us.
Okay.
So there was, um, something, April Pontrelli, I'm the elections coordinator. On the county canvassing board, on the procedure, so of the five members before us, we'll have one review the registration list, one the result tapes, one with the poll books for each precinct, the recap report from each precinct, and then the canvassing documents. Now, there were, the summaries were also put into a drop box for the, since some of the reports are quite large. But we do have printed versions, too.
So you could take samples of the poll books and from precincts and look at those to see if they match the number of votes?
And I think that's what we did last time.
Yeah.
So you just have to direct us how to do it.
Okay. So if you want to just give me a precinct, so I can find the information, pass it out, and then you can?
Okay. They're by numbers, but I don't have a list of the numbers. And so I don't want to throw out a number and then just be, oh, that was not a precinct.
Uh, we could do 0410?
Okay.
0410?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Five, four, ten. So, we have the registration list?
Okay, thank you.
And then the poll list. And then again, these are the spoiled, if you asked about the spoiled ballots that were sealed.
Sure.
And then the recap sheet. All those documents are inside there. So if you want to just pick the name, those are there, or see, see that it matches the poll book?
Okay. So you just read the name out loud?
You can read the name out loud, and so just put me the number.
Okay.
Where they should be on the poll book, and it should match.
Okay. So it's number 264-10? Two, six, two, six, four. And what does dash, dash, 10 mean? That's their district?
It was the district.
Okay. Yep. And did you want me to read the name, or did you want to read the name that I have listed here? 264. I have Jessica Savannah, last name C-A-B, and I won't read the rest of it, but yes.
Perfect, that's right.
Okay.
So we're going through the registration list and matching it to the poll book based on the numbers that they are in, they are in agreean, agreement.
This is sealed, so I don't want to open it.
Nope. But you were asking about the spoiled ballots?
Yep, I appreciate it.
So that is everything from 410 that is spoiled?
Yep, there are two.
And that would be also a part of recap, sorry. I'm just using our microphone here.
Terry, my phone.
Yes. The recap sheet that should be included in?
Is located in?
According to my book?
It's downstairs.
According to my book, I have 692 voters in this precinct, and so would that be on his recap sheet?
It should be. I believe the recap sheet might be down, downstairs.
Oh, so it's not on that one.
What do you have, Commissioner Bender, for how many people voted?
Would that be at the very last page?
The pink sheet?
So the very, so we had, what was the name?
The, the, there was 692 voters in my precinct.
Okay. And what was the last name of the person?
The last name is Tanya Jean. Starts with a D-A.
And then it should also match the canvas, 600 and?
This is 692-10.
We're talking, not precinct, 410.
Precinct 410. But there's also, she's looking at the district leg, too.
Okay.
You should have, you should have 692 voters.
District 10?
410.
District 15.
Last name was Jean?
410. Yep. Tanya Jean, and ends with a D-A. Last name starts with a D-A.
Oh, sorry. I missed that hard.
Sorry. Am I making it harder for you? D-A-V, if that helps. Yep. She was?
So 692-10?
Yes.
Or match there?
Okay.
Yeah. Is there some, there's a page for every?
Yes.
Election.
So this will be the, you have the official canvas report. And then... So this will be for all of the, all of the ballots cast for those precincts. Let me grab the tapes here.
Yes.
410.
410.
So on Election Day, you have the number 792. Is that the, that was our last person? 79?
692-10?
692?
Yes.
692?
692-10.
So on here, we have 691.
Oh, because that's for the 10.
So, this is our, this is our precinct.
By totals. So how many absentee were cast, how many were done that Election Day?
So, the Election Day number, 691. So we're off by one.
Which page am I looking at?
Well, actually, this, this is by, if you want, if you want a specific race, you can check the specific race to what we have on these tabulator records.
And how do you reference that? This is D10, so?
Yep. So D10 would be, uh, district. So you can see here, the state representative, D10. State representative, so those numbers should?
410, D10. Okay. 203, 155, 199, 186, and 912 for the total. Okay, okay. So that's 410, D10. But you guys were on?
692 votes out of this precinct.
And on this sheet we have here for Election Day. And this is for individual races.
Should have to have a total.
So where do I find that?
Uh, that would match the poll book?
In here.
692.
And this is for all the individual races. To match these precinct numbers, sorry, all these precinct numbers to match.
So which page?
Which race are you looking?
Does he have a total, does he have a total of 692 votes cast in this precinct? Yes.
In 410?
So that's what I, that's what I'm looking for, Dean, it's just that.
Yeah, I know. I've got 100 pages here. Which page do I look at?
This, so this is? This is the complete recap. This is, this is individual races, so we can, we can compare what we have on the tabulator tapes to the results here.
Yep. And we had 691 in 0410.
And why are we missing one vote, then?
Yeah, we're, we will have some, uh, one or two. We have, we're allowed by state statute, a error of five.
Okay.
Right?
Okay.
Because, yeah, the, according to the canvas report, it says, ballots cast total 799, which matches the 799 on here.
Yep.
Okay. So that number matches the 799. 108 were absentee. Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
108 plus minus, or 799 minus 108 is?
691.
691. Okay.
And we had 692 listed in our, our book.
And I had 692 listed here. So one of those may be a spoiled ballot in that blue bag. So?
Potentially, yes.
Yes. Okay. Do we want to look at one more?
I'm, I'm, I'm used to it now. Why not?
Yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah, here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give a name so that you're not pulling it. We are, can we put these away, people? And then I will, I'm just gonna give her a number, and then, so let's do precinct 4-02.
402, we had 671 total votes cast.
And we have to pull them up.
111 were absentee for Election Day ballots, and 560.
I'll grab, I'll grab that poll book, or the registration list.
42. And what did you say your total was, Dean? 671?
Total was 671.
Okay.
42, so I think it's 671.
Thanks, Dean.
It's 44.
I don't remember which one I said. What precinct did I say?
412.
402. Maybe I should have walked down there and grabbed one.
I think I have it here.
Yep, there it is.
Manual Baptist.
So, how were you distributing this?
I was just?
Jean had, Jean had the big book, so give Jean the big book. Let's at least do our same, totally lost. I think I had that one. Yeah, I had that one. And this one's not open, Ben, so can I open this one?
Yes.
Yes?
That's how you get that.
The other one was opened, so.
That's fine. It seals it so that we're, um, confident that there's no change between the polling and the, whether it's?
Right. Jean, do you want to pull a number?
Yeah.
Well, I could look first and see if I got the same numbers Dean just gave me. He gave me 641. Oh, he gave me 560, and I have 560 cast on the day of the election. Okay. Jean, you want to pull a number?
Yep, 255.
Richard H-A-N?
Yes.
Okay. And Dee, or Gerald, do you have the one that gives the total number of cast on your sheet, too, in precinct 402? I'm not sure.
559 ballots that were scanned, and one express ballot, ballot for 560.
Yep, yep.
That's what I have.
Yep, that's what I have. Do you want to do another one, or?
We can do one more.
Okay.
142. Correct.
Okay. Are there any more questions? Do you want to pull any more books? Wondering how the commission feels.
Thank you.
That is a lot of paper. Do you want to look at any more? Ben, how long are these records kept for?
22 months.
Any other questions for Ben? Then I'm going to open it up for public comment, and you may speak at this point. We get three minutes, and Kim is actually using the timer today. Just give her a second to get it pulled up. You can give your name and your county.
Cindy Byer, Minnehaha County.
Okay, go ahead, Cindy.
Are we ready?
Yep.
Well, you know me well. As a concerned citizen, I am once again coming to make comment during the public comment time. Myself and numerous others have been bringing up concerns regarding... Myself and numerous others have been bringing up concerns regarding the 2020 election over the last 11 months. We've requested public information through FOIA requests, we can't get that. We are told our elections are the gold standard, and evidently we are just supposed to accept that. While we don't believe our elections are the gold standard, and therefore we keep watching and analyzing the data. A number of folks were downloading the data from the Secretary of State website on a five and 10-minute interval on election night. They were pulling off data by county across the state. As this data has been analyzed, it reveals that several races have been affected by data flips or data drops, and it seems to have happened in Minnehaha County. By data flips or drops, I mean candidates lost votes, and why would that be? To name just a few, Gerald Benega, Joe Kipli, Leah Anderson, Jen Blyenberg, Tom Holmes, Nicole Colwells, Monet Johnson, David Cool, Greg, or Gary Layton, John Sarda, Steve Kolbeck, Arch Beal, and the list goes on. The drop of votes started around 8:00 PM and continued through the 11 o'clock hour. These people all lost votes. So this may be of particular interest since it happened to one of the county commissioners. Commissioner Benega had 6,298 votes recorded at 10:30, and at 10:40, that vote total changed to 6,220 votes recorded. Commissioner Benega had 78 votes removed in a 10-minute time period, and then at 10:47, a data drop must have happened because the votes recorded was at 10,143. So in seven minutes, they had 3,923 votes added. So these ESNS machines are known to flip votes and gain or lose ballots. I know that you all sent the video in regards to the Tripp County hand counting. I know Ben did a presentation here. I don't know if Ben got his information from reading?
30 seconds.
The article in the Argus Leader. I talked to the individual myself, and out of a precinct that had 356 ballots, 75 got dropped. That's a difference of 21%. These machines aren't reliable. You canvassed the vote, and yet you didn't look at what the machines counted in each of those precincts.
Yep, 3 seconds.
You should all be asking, you should all be asking yourself the question, what happened in this election and the 2020 election? And are you still comfortable with hearing the comment that it was a gold standard of elections, when I just told you of the anomalies that happened?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? I need a motion, I need a motion, consider a motion to certify the results of the November 8, 2022 general election.
I'll make a motion to certify.
Second.
Commissioner? Because you're on the ballot. Yep. So I have a motion, need somebody else to make a second.
I second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to certify the election, and we need a roll call vote. Is there any comments?
Aye. Barth.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Hiberger.
Aye. Motion passes 4 to 0 with one abstention, abstention. With that, is there any non-commissioning actions?
Madam Chair, I just have a quick item. I was reading in today's update from Dakota Scout that the city of Sioux Falls is looking at changing their rules on Airbnbs here in town, and there's a question as to whether they can collect the hotel tax on that. Now, should we approve one for our county? Would we then be able to collect that tax money, is my question. Thank you.
Good job. Okay, I don't think I have anything else, so motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.